Peace, how's everybody doing?
Peace.
How's everybody feeling today? Good start to the week? Having a good start to your week?
Absolutely. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can y'all hear me? Y'all feel like talking?
I can hear you.
Okay. Um, I just wanna, we're gonna be real brief, probably forty-five minutes. Uh, I just wanna make sure that I, uh, highlight a couple of things and make sure that you have a solid understanding um, of the, of the drain system. Um, being that that is the other main component of the, the plumbing system. So, do you guys feel like you solid on the supply side of things?
A lot better, yeah.
Are there any questions, any clarity needed around the, the supply? How we get fresh water, potable water in?
I just wanted to drill it in my head today, like drill it, drill it.
Okay, so tell me how it works then. How do we get, how do we get, uh, fresh potable water into our bathroom? When I go take a shower shortly, how will I be able to get hot water in my shower?
Starting from like the public water supply or?
Yes, I do have a public water supply.
Alright, so, uh, public water supply, then we have the main drain that runs parallel to the, to the homes.
What is that called?
Um. The, the water main.
Mm-hmm.
The water main that runs parallel to the homes. And then from there, we break off into the meters that are at the front of each home. Uh, from the meter, we have the service, the water service pipe that runs to the main water shut-off valve. From the main water shut-off valve, we have the water distribution pipes that run to the, uh, fixtures or, and then to the water heater.
Wait, so it runs to the fixtures and then it goes to the water heater?
Doesn't it go to the water heater and then the fixtures?
Well, no, you the inspector, so.
Yeah, it goes to the, cause, yeah, cause we need the option of hot or cold, so water heater and fixtures.
Right.
Water heater, uh, to start, we have the cold water dip tube. From there, we're gonna go to the bottom of the tank to the combustion chamber. In the combustion chamber, we have the pilot flame and the thermo couple. Pilot flame is-
What does the thermo couple do?
The thermo couple regulates the temperature inside-
What does that mean? Regulating the temperature, what does that mean?
Uh, in case the water needs to be released, um, oh, my mom's calling me. Um, in case our water heats up too hot, uh, we gotta have, make sure that our thermo couple is keeping up with the temperature, uh, in case the water needs to be released also. Through the TPR valve, the temperature pressure relief valve, which is gonna release, uh, one hundred fifty PSI, two hundred and ten degrees Fahrenheit, that's what the thermo couple-
What does that mean? One hundred and fifty PSI, what does that mean?
Uh, so, it's a press second. Pressure per second.
Well, what is, what does that mean? You say the water come out, like, I don't know, what does that mean?
So, it's a water heater, so our water heaters like producing gases and gases have pressure and um, we, we need to make sure that-
You're doing good. Okay, so listen, slow down and think about it, right? So, everything that you're saying is right, but I want you to put it in the right context of how the water heater works. You're absolutely right that the combustion process does create, uh, gases. But you told me that, um, the water at a hundred and fifty PSI and two hundred and ten degrees or whatever would come out of the TPR valve. Why would water need to come out of the TPR valve?
Because the pressure builds up inside of the tank and needs to be released, it can't just-
Correct.
It can't fit.
That's correct. And why is there pressure building up in the tank?
Because, because it's gases that are building up and-
Not the gases part. Think about what is, what's happening, what's the, what's the two functions of the hot water storage tank?
To heat up water, so our, our, uh, storage, okay, so our storage tank can only expand by half a gallon of water.
But as we're, why does it expand? Because we are-
Heating up water.
Exactly. When we add heat, we're basically adding energy, which adds pressure. So, you're absolutely right. Uh, the TPR valve is a safety mechanism so that in case the, the tank becomes over-pressurized, instead of exploding, it can automatically start to, uh, release that water.
Okay.
Good job, Jacob. Okay, you must have been in your material, you ain't like last time when I called and you, you ain't have it together, huh? You say, hell with that.
Watched our legs are over and over and over.
So, do you feel like you understand it? Because Jacob, this is what you're good at, and I had to figure this out about you. See, you smart, right? And you write well and you're very sharp, right? So, you need to make sure that like what we're doing now, explaining it and being able to answer questions, that's what you need to focus on because you can remember things. I know that you can remember things and I know that you can communicate it well, but can you explain it? If you can explain it, that means that you truly understand it, like how you just did for me today. Now, I feel a lot more confident in you and your understanding of, um, the water heater and how we get, you know, water throughout our house. Make sense?
Yeah.
Good job. Um. Nehemiah, explain to me what you understand. So, we, we cool on the supply line, we, I mean, on the supply side. Explain to me, uh, what you, how you understand the, uh, the other side, the DWV system. Explain to me how you, how you understand that to work.
Uh, the way I understand it to work is that, um, after we're using the water, the waste needs to go somewhere, so we do have a P-trap and we have plumbing vents and with the plumbing vents allow in the P-trap, um, it's so that it doesn't siphon and the water doesn't escape the P-trap, allowing odors to come into the house.
Hold up, before you get there, I'm at my bathroom sink and I'm washing my hands. Once I turn off my water to, you know, the running water that's coming out, where does the dirty water that I washed my hand, where does that go? Walk me through the path.
So, it goes through the tailpiece, which is a straight pipe. Then it goes into a P-trap and then it goes through a horizontal pipe, usually it's PVC piping and then it should go-
What is that called? After the trap, what is that piece called?
I don't remember that.
The D-word.
Drain pipe?
Fixer drain, yeah.
Okay, fixture drain and then it goes down to the, the building drain?
Cause the fixture drain is connected to what?
The building drain.
What do we call it? The fixture, the fixture is literally connected to what other pipe? The fixture drain is connected to what other pipe?
The building drain. Sewer's drain.
The fixture is connected directly to the building drain? Where does all of our waste go? It's eventually going out of the building to the drain, to the sewer, but where is it directly, immediately from each of the fixtures, where does it go? You told me tailpiece, trap, drain, what?
It's a stack man. Stack man. The waste stack, then it goes from the waste stack to the building drain.
So, then at the point of the waste stack, then what happens?
The water goes down.
Okay. And that goes to the drain, to the building drain, out to the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, then what else happens?
Oh, I don't, you got me there, I don't know.
Let's ju- let's just say I had to take a poo. Right? And so, the waste goes down and then what else happens?
I know it goes in, it, it goes into the sewage and it doesn't, then it has to get processed.
If I have this bottle of water and I'm trying, I wanna let all of the water out. If I just take this nozzle off, it's gonna go slow, right? But if I stab it with a pin and add some air to it, what will happen?
It'll start to leak out slow.
Slower or faster?
Faster.
Why?
Because there's a hole in it and it's coming out.
And I'm adding-
And you're adding air.
To neutralize the pressure. So, that's the same thing that the vent does for us. So, that's why it has to, uh, exhaust out of the house. We're letting the gases out, but we're also letting air in to regulate the pressure so that we make sure, cause if not, then the waste would-
Come back up. So, it's negative, so is it, so is it air pressure that pushes it down or is it, I get confused when I read it? So, or is it positive pressure?
No, I think it's negative pressure is what they call it.
And then what if, cause for example, I know certain houses you could turn it on and you'll hear it, well, happened if the house doesn't have it, but the, there's a vent there.
You could turn it what on?
You know, when you're in the bathroom, you could turn on the exhaust vent.
Oh, that's the fan. Yeah, 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 so, yeah, that's, that's something else. So, that's exhausting the actual condition space in the house cause you got all of that moist air in your bathroom from the shower and all that kinda stuff. So, that's a different exhaust. We're talking about the waste, the gas from that, from our waste and how that has to, like, we can't, we can inhale moist air just fine. We can't continuously inhale those gases from the waste. So, that's why it has to go outside. Same concept with the water heater. That gas has to be vented directly outside. Um. Deja, explain to me how you understand the drain system to work.
So, like, kinda like the same thing you were saying, like, where to start?
I'm at the kitchen and I'm washing dishes, something I never, ever do. And I'm done washing my dishes, I, I let my, my dirty dish water out. Explain to me the path, where's it going?
Okay, so, you start at the, um, the tailpiece and then you go to the P-trap at the bottom of the sink, the same as the bathroom. And then there's the, um, the branch pipe or the, um, the fixture pipe.
What, the fixture, what kinda pipe?
Um.
What's the whole concept of what we're doing? The D-word?
The sewage drain.
Yes.
For the fixture drain. And then that goes down, um.
The fixture drain is connected to what?
Um, this, the stack, the stack vent. And that's connected to the building drain.
Mm-hmm.
Connected to-
That's correct. And so, explain to me, um, this concept of these gases and what happens to that? Is it the same thing at the kitchen as it is in the bathroom as far as that or what?
Like from the sink?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same, um, so. Um, hold on. Yeah, it's the same, so that vent is used so the water doesn't backflow into the kitchen sink and it allow cool down.
Okay, and you mentioned something about a P-trap, right? You mentioned that?
Yes.
What, um, what's the point of a P-trap? What does a P-trap do?
Uh, P-trap creates a, um, seal so that sewer gases don't, um, leak into your home and cause a foul odor.
That's correct. Good job. Um, okay, so, I want you guys to draw this in your notes. That process that we just talked about, draw it. You should do the, do it for both the water and first it starts here at the water main, then it goes there, then it goes here, then it goes there, then it goes here. So, in your mind, it's easier, remember I talked about following the, the pathway um, of, of each thing and where it goes? So, coming in, what's this pathway and then going out, what this, what is its past pathway? So, in a bathroom, we have, um, at typically at least three fixtures. What are they? Uh, yes, Jacob, this is gonna be recorded and placed in your kajabi.
Was it sink and bathtub?
And what's the other one?
Shower tub.
Shower, shower tub.
Okay, sink, yes, toilet. Three main, sink, tub, shower, whatever you have, and then toilet. So, all three of those fixtures must have a what?
A drain pipe.
And-
P-trap.
That's correct. All of the fixtures need to have a trap. All of them, right? So, we know that the toilet has its built-in and here it is for the sink. Okay, so remember, on the supply side of things, the water is coming in under pressure. So, that momentum is kinda, it's like a water slide. You know how they had a water shooting down the water slide? So, when you turn in around the water slide, like the momentum, that pressure is helping to carry you. It's the same, that's exactly how, uh, the, our, our plumbing works with the water coming in. Now, going out is a different story because it's not pressurized. So, what's the main thing that we do to help get the waste out?
Slow the drainage pipes.
Yes, all of the drainage ply- pipes slope down towards the sewer. It's very subtle, it's hard to kinda like tell, uh, with the, with your naked eye cause it's, it's very, the requirement is very subtle. I think it's a quarter of an inch per foot or something like that, so it's very subtle, but they all need to slope down, you see? Oh, yeah, quarter of an inch per foot, I was right. This one coming from the toilet as well as any of your other fixtures, okay? So, it doesn't matter whether you're using a bathroom, taking a shower, washing your hands, you're still gonna have the traps under each fixture and those traps are gonna connect to your drain, which is going to eventually connect to your stack, okay? Now, at the point of the, what is this called right here?
The main stack or the waste stack?
This specific component.
Why?
Why?
Who said that? Who whispered it first?
Not me, I have a second.
Okay, well, whoever said it, you're correct, right? So, I think the, I think it was you who was asking the questions about the horizontal to the vertical or something like that. So, this is where all of that comes in, uh, to play. Because again, uh, if this were on the supply side of things, we, the water, again, that momentum, the pressure is what aids it. On the, on the draining side of things, it has to slope and going from this horizontal to, uh, the vertical, we don't want anything to impede it. So, you see how this is set up, it's already sloping down. This connection will receive it and then allow it to flow down into, uh, the waste stack. And then same pipe going up. So, you can see this, if, if you're in a house with a basement, at the, in the basement, you'll see this main stack and then if you go up in the attic like I did in that one video, you will see it literally going out the roof. A house can have more than one waste stack. Depending upon the construction, the design of it, it can have more than one. Okay, and so, all of the fixtures will be plumbed basically to go into this waste stack. So, when you go down in the basement and you look up and you see plumbing here and plumbing there, it's all basically trying to feed in to that one waste stack. So, that's how we get the wastewater out. That is the drain, that's where we get the, the whole DWV concept, is the drain, the waste and the vent. All of these work in conjunction with each other, again, to get out the waste and also to expel the gases. Yes, Deja?
So, all of the, um, pipes leading or leaving from each fixture, they're all sloped at one fourth, uh, per, per foot?
Uh, I believe it's a quarter of an inch per foot, but don't quote me on every fixture.
The books say if it's greater than three inches, then it's an eighth an inch per foot.
Okay.
So, if it's three inches or less, then it's a quarter inch.
Yeah, so typically it's gonna, it's gonna be a quarter inch. Most of them are, are three inches, every now and again you'll see one. But again, you won't be able to tell that with, with your eye and you're probably not going, like, when I look, I just look to see if they're, if they're plum, then I call it out. But if they're sloping, then I'm good. I don't typically like measure to verify that it's a quarter and inch or an eighth of an inch or whatever.
Hmm.
Uh, Dea?
Can the maze, uh, can the stacks, if the, if the house has multiple stacks, can they be different material or are they always gonna be the same material?
Well, that can be, that can be different material because if it was, if there was one that was the original and for whatever reason, another one added, it could've, it could be a different material.
Okay.
Any questions on what we see here? This is clear, the drain, waste and vent and how each of those, uh, components work together to again dispel the waste and the gases?
What is the vent called again that it like releases into the roof if it's not a chimney? What is it like specific name of the vent?
Wait, if it releases into the roof and not the chimney?
Like, uh-
A plumbing vent, just a plumbing vent.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yep, um. Are there any specifications and in terms of, uh, the size of the trap? Is there a rec- a size requirement for P-traps?
It's not supposed to be too long.
What's too long?
I think it's like four in, no, hold on, I'm not even gonna guess, I don't know.
I think it's six, six or twelve, I, I wanna say six or twelve inches.
Six or twelve inches what?
That's how long the P-trap is supposed to be, it can't be any longer than that cause then it's not gonna be able to, the water won't be able to get to the bottom and then back up cause it's being pressurized. So, if it's too long, then it's not gonna reach all the way down to the bottom of the P-trap.
So, when you say long, like where, where are you talking about, like from here to here or from?
Going straight down, so where it's connected to the tailpiece. I believe that piece can't be longer than six inches, cause then it can't get underneath and-
What about the diameter?
It can't be too deep, yeah.
What about the diameter?
Well, it's, it can't go from, I, it's confusing in the book. I know it can't go, I don't think it's supposed to go bigger. I don't think it's supposed to go bigger. It's supposed to go bigger as to where the flow of the water is going. So if the water is going down, I believe the pipe, the P trap for an example, needs to be bigger than the. Tailpiece, if I've read it right. I, I got kinda confused there.
Uh, yeah, that concept is right. So basically what they're saying is if you have a three inch pipe, then you can't have an inch and a half. Uh, P trap because the floor of the water, it, it won't work. So that's correct. But what is the, what is it like a standard size for the diameter of a P trap? James, do you know? You're, oh, go ahead.
For the diameter, I don't, I would think like an inch, inch and a quarter.
You said inch, inch and a quarter? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Uh, close. So. On average is gonna be about an inch and a half. There's some specification. So it, it, the, the true answer is, is it the fixture? That is attached to matters because again, we have to determine what type of flow is going to have. So. Uh, I believe for tubs, um, sinks in the kitchen. Uh, they're all an inch and a half and then there are some other fixtures where it goes to uh, an inch and a quarter. Again. Uh, something else that I don't typically like measure. If it looked like this one in person. Looked small to me. And so I measured this one and it was, it was like actually a little bit, just slightly bigger than an inch. Uh, and a half. And so I was good to go, but uh. Again, typically, you know, you're not gonna be able to eyeball it. And in most cases, as long as it doesn't appear to be super small. That's what would give me cause to, to actually uh, uh, go ahead and measure it. So. In this, this is a real life. This is literally from the inspection that I did earlier today. So we have there, uh, it's like a double sink, right? So. What is this? Explain to me how this is set up because I've never seen. Like a double sink and like, how, how does this work? Is this any different from anything that we've been talking about?
I would assume it's the same thing. It's just shorter cuz it's a double sink cuz the water's still coming down a little. Tailpiece and is draining into a P trap. Just from the flow of the water is how I would explain it.
Looks like maybe they added a secondary. It doesn't look like that's the part on the left. Looks like original. Looks like they maybe added that. And attached it to the sides of maybe a re, like maybe they rehabbed and then added the left sink maybe.
Um, but in terms of. The, the flow of the wastewater as we just described, would it be the same in this setup?
Yeah.
Do you see any defects?
I see a defect. The water wouldn't go straight down. It look like it could possibly cross contaminate.
Or right there? At the drain pan.
It doesn't go straight down. It can go into the other pipe. Across.
Um, okay, let me see.
Isn't the vent been on top? That top portion there?
Hold up, let me, let me share the whole thing. So I can see. Okay, so this is that same picture from the other side, okay? So here we have it here. And then this is the other side. So on top. Uh, to somebody's point about uh, cross contamination or whatever, you wouldn't have that because both of these, see right here? And right here, they're both draining here. So when you say it could come across to the other side, remember, there's gonna be water that's running down here. So is, uh, even if it like were to slowly like creep like maybe right here or whatever. Soon as you turn that water on or somewhere, water comes, everything's flushing down here. Make sense? So there's no, there's no cross anything. It's basically coming from the same place. This is, you know how up top, you just got two uh, sink bases. So it's not. Like one is bringing water in, one is sewer, it's just two sink, but they both each have a drain. Drain here and you can't see it on this side, but drain there. And they're both feeding into this one P trap. So. Again, do we see any defects? What material is the, uh, are the water distribution pipes in this home?
It looks like the left is PVC and the right is cast iron.
On this one right here?
Or galvanized.
Oh yeah, galvanized. The left side looks like PV, PVC. And the right side can be galvanized, cast iron.
Who else? Any other guesses? Galvanized, cast iron? Any other guesses?
I thought the CPVC cuz it supports both hot and cold or PVC can't support both, right?
Where do you see CPVC at?
On the left?
The left over here. So this white right here is CPVC?
I think so. I believe so.
Okay, who else? The material, the water distribution pipes?
On the website.
Say again, I didn't hear. I, I still didn't catch it.
Copper.
That's correct. Who said that? Is that Deja?
Yes.
Where do you see the water distribution pipes at, Deja?
On the left picture, um. It's connected to what?
Smaller ones.
These are the drain pipes. Remember, we just talked about that. These are the drain pipes. Our distribution pipes, how we get our water. These are coppers, see? They're connected. You got a hot one right here and a cold one. Hot and cold. Those are your distribution. Under every um. Faucet, you're gonna see that. You're gonna see the two supply lines coming in, hot and cold, and then you should see uh, one trap. Uh, going out, connecting to the drain. Make sense?
What material are the drain pipes though?
What material is what?
The drain pipes.
Uh, the white ones here?
Yeah.
Um, I gotta, I think these are um. They're not, they're not uh, CPVC, um. There's another picture that has the actual. No, that's not it.
Is that galvanized steel also or was it?
Where?
The, on the right.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. No, that's not it. That doesn't say. Would you call this out as a defect? This is, this is a close up of what we were just looking at. So again, see your supply line here, distribution pipe connecting. To the flexible connector. Remember we have that flexible connector that connect our distribution uh, pipes to our actual fixture. Both hot and cold. What, what would your uh, defect comment be? Let me know in the comments. Deteriorating fixture drain. Rested at the back and the, the back of what? You mind? Rest at fitting indication of water damage. Where's everybody else's comment? Further evaluation on sheathing repair. Where do you see sheathing at? With an engineer professional. No, where do you see sheathing? If you, if you're, if you're referring to this right here, um, this isn't sheathing because remember where this is. Right? This is under the sink. So this is like a wall and they just, they just got some little pieces of plywood there. So that's not, that's not sheathing. Water distribution pipe connection between PVC and it is not. Connected. Is this the water distribution pipe right here?
No, that's not the distribution pipe.
So what's the, I haven't seen a, a inadequate comment yet. Say again? From this angle, can you see? This is a good shot, actually. Goes to the photographer. Rested. Okay, what about here? Anything that you would call out here? What is this?
Is that galvanic corrosion or whatever?
What is it though? What kind of pipe is that?
Be the hot water. It's on the left side.
Is it a supply or a drain line?
Sup- supply.
Okay. And is there anything that you would call out?
It's corrosion.
Looks like some corrosion. I could see some grain on the fittings. So that's.
If we identify a defect, what's the second function that our narrative comment needs to serve?
A suggestion.
Yes, why? The implications, the significance. So why does corrosion? Matter in this case?
It weakens the note.
It puts that in the water. Basically, it can put. Minerals in the pipe.
And it can reduce it, it could reduce the diameter of the interior.
So ultimately, it would affect what? In their, in their day to day experience, ultimately, it would affect what?
Water flow. It'd be small, shorter water flow or inadequate water flow.
Okay, so that's our second part. And what's the third part to our comment?
Recommendation.
That's correct. Who are gonna, who are we gonna recommend?
Plumber, licensed plumber for this one.
Yes. You see that? So. Identify the, first you gotta see it yourself. And this is where getting your reps and standing your material counts because you have to be able to look at this. Like I saw this in real life, right? So you have to be able to look, open up under uh, each sink. Uh, so I, what actually happened in this inspection, it was funny because I was telling him, I'm like. Uh, you got some plumbing issues, right? And he was like, what you mean? The water work fine, the water work fine. And I was like, I can't flush the toilet, turn on the sink and run the tub. At the same time, you got some issues. I don't know exactly what they are, but I know there are some issues. When I got down into the basement, sure enough, I'll show you those pipes. The, the pipes at the water heater make these look amazing. I'm like, I'm surprised there's any water can even pass through there. Like it was Tiffany. Uh, like y'all know the, the Tiffany's like that blue greenish color. That's how the pipes look there, but it was more. On the, on the green side of things. So again, being able to identify with your eyes first the defect. Communicate what that is in a clear concise manner. Explain why. Or the implications, why this matters, why it, cuz, cuz some things is like, um. There are defects, but it's like, uh, that won't affect, again, the, a safety hazard, the function, it won't affect any of that, so whatever. Identify the implications and then transferring the liability by uh, making a recommendation. Got it?
So you, so you flush the toilet, turn on the shower and turn on the sink all at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
I typically will turn on the sinks first and I let them run a little bit. And then I flush the toilet and then I watch for any change in water pressure. The toilets were also, in this specific inspection, the toilets were also, they ran slow. And I noticed at the end of the flush, there was a little gurgle. So I know what. What's that evidence of?
Water pressure problems.
Yep. Without even seeing any of those things or knowing, just from that one little thing, uh, I can, I can uh, pretty much so tell. Exactly what's going on. So this is. What's the question?
This is Tiffany. My, um, my problem, uh, uh, is, is seem like it might be a pressure issue, but I did, on the inspection, I did the uh. The toilet overflows if you have the sink water running at the same time. So is that a pressure issue?
The toilet over, so if you have, you turn the sink on and then flush the toilet?
Exactly.
And then it overflowed?
Yes.
That's probably an issue in the drain pipe or the toilet.
Okay.
Did you come to the same conclusion?
I thought it would, it might have been an issue with this. Well, I thought about the sensor, but then I'm like, no, cuz it, it works normal if. If other water isn't on it to say, like if you're just flushing, so then turn on the sink, it's fine. But if you flush the toilet. Then turn on the sink at the same time, the toilet overflow.
Hmm, I still think that that would, for me, I would still think, think that that was the issue with the direct. Drain line on the toilet just because it's overflowing. Like if it gurgled, like in my case, or it was slower coming back or something like that. Then okay, but if it's actually overflowing, then that mean that the water that's trying to get down, it can't get down there.
Okay.
For me. But I would recommend qualified plumber.
So.
You did what?
So when I went to the basement, the pipes were torn up. Like corrosion everywhere, rust.
It's very common, like most of the houses that you will see, uh, will have that. Um, do you see any defects here?
That, um, thing they have on the tailpiece, they can't use that, that fitting.
That thing that they have on the tailpiece.
I would use an arrow, I'll use an arrow to point at it. I would look up, I don't know what it's called, but I know what it is. No, put down, put down, that, yeah, that.
This right here?
Yes.
So what's the defect?
The flexible hose.
Yeah, it's flexible, it's rigid, they're gonna have that, um, in the toe piece.
Who's dog? Uh, what's your question? Are there any other defects?
I, I thought that piece was okay as long as it wasn't being like stretched or curved or.
This piece here?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Has two blue, um, two blue pipes. Isn't one supposed to be red?
Two blue pipes. Oh, back here. Let me see if I got another picture that. Uh, I didn't even catch that. Good catch. Um. Uh, I didn't even catch that, good catch. Um. Sure is too blue. Technically, it they, they're supposed to be uh color coded. But that's not necessarily a defect as long as there is hot water coming out of, cuz pecs can come in white as well. Red, white and blue, pretty much so, so um, I may make a comment. Uh, just to let them know that, but as long as there's still hot water coming out of there, I wouldn't necessarily call that a defect. This is, Nehemiah is correct, though, this is the defect, their flex uh pipes are not allowed to be uh to serve as. The tailpieces, that's actually uh in a book. Uh, on page three thirty, flexible tailpieces may not be used. We need a smooth uh surface, again, nothing that could impede or. Catch any water, any debris or anything like that, we need a smooth surface. So there were, this was a four unit building, uh, they had these everywhere. They were, they were everywhere, so I just took a picture and I'm gonna make one blankie comment about it and then include each picture. Um, that I that I saw that was like this. Um, when you look at this, do you understand what you're looking at? Because a couple of weeks ago, you would have probably had no clue, right? But now, do you understand what you, cuz you, cuz you, if you screenshot this, could you go explain it to somebody in your house? About what we're looking at? Using the proper names of the components, explaining to them what will happen if we turn on the water at this sink. Yes, no, maybe so?
A little bit better.
Yeah.
A little bit better, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, well, if you don't feel like you can, you should, before you go to bed tonight, make sure that. You can, this is, this is in turn, from a practical perspective, like inspecting the giants, this is where. You you do a lot of of your work, under every sink, you're gonna be looking at this same type setup. Your supply lines, your P trap, your connections, your fittings. You're gonna be looking at that, inspecting, observing and reporting on that under every sink.
The tailpiece on these, uh, where does it end? The tailpiece can bend?
No, that's what we're saying, you can't use flexible tailpieces. No flex pipes.
I thought that was the P trap, that is the flexible is on.
So the P trap curves around here, did behind this little spouse, spouse, behind this little uh. Whatever you call this thing, start the, is where the P trap actually starts.
Um, where in the book did you say, um?
Page three thirty for the flexible tailpiece. So they can look at page three thirty, they have a another picture in there that got a better angle than what this one does.
The the actual part that connects to the the sink, what are, what are those pipes called right there?
Where?
The those, yeah, those right there.
These that are coming out?
Yeah.
What are those called?
Drain pipes?
Can you see it better here? Jacob? Wow, they have blue lines all the way through, I did not even notice that. Uh, and then on this one, you can, you can actually see in this picture, can y'all tell that this is sloping down right here? You can see if in the picture?
Oh, yeah.
So that's what's connecting to the stack.
I never knew that.
Never knew what?
Like, like when I used to look at plumbing events, I never knew like what they did when I was on the roof. So like this is interesting to me now, since I know they do now.
Exactly. Uh, same concept here, wow, look, this is a new vanity that they got. And they are, they must have just bought blue pecs lines. So what are these? What are those?
Water supply line.
And these are what? The silver things are what?
Turnoff valves.
Shut off.
The the silk, like the hose part.
Oh, the hose part, uh. Those like flexible.
Connector, yes.
All water, yeah.
Yep. And uh, again, your drain. Your P trap, you can't see it, and it, you can't really tell it in this picture, but there is a P trap. And then going out to connect to uh. The main stack. And also the vent. Uh, oh, here's one. So this is the uh main stack.
Damn.
So you see, a lot of times too, if you are not familiar with the material of what it is, you see this tag right here?
What tag, that metal tag?
Uh, there's a white one. White uh. Oh, right here. Right there.
Oh, okay.
James, you got a question?
So I was curious, I know you said there could be multiple stacks in residence? If there's gonna be a clean out for stack?
Yes. There should be. Cuz like this, so and this how, this is a quad, right? So for anything for units unless it's still considered residential. Even though it's technically uh multi-family, so in this basement, there is like broken up into two sides. And there's a stack on each side, there's two furnaces, two water heaters on on each side type of situation. So this is the the drain right here, you guys see it? Except that is backed up with water. See, that's standing water. Talking my head off, huh?
What was that on the main waste stack? They kind of look like insulation, but like.
This is spray foam, it's spray foam, old spray foam. Which means that there has been what?
Repairs done, cuz of.
Cuz there was a what?
But that's a call, that's, that don't even look right.
So here's the clean out on one of the stacks. Leaking, active leak. No, you know, it need more than a snake, my boy. It's need more than a snake, so uh, this was one of the things, you remember how I talk about at the end of the inspection? Uh, if the person is not there, I'll call them and let them know what I found, this is something that I. I called out, I was like, there's, I I was like, I was in the basement, somebody uh flushed the toilet or something, did something upstairs. Cuz I heard them when they did it and I was like waiting to see the water and that's how I was able to catch it recording. Cuz I turned on my camera, cuz I knew it was gonna come out and sure as shit. The water started, started coming out, so this is, that's wastewater. That's coming out like that, whether it came from the toilet, a a sink or whatever, like that's wastewater. It there, having a leak at the main stack is like a huge issue, you don't want that, you want this. Cuz again, this is what's connected to the sewer, how you get all of this crud out. And instead, it's, you know, pooling basically in the basement and. You, that's the maintenance guy that's talking my head off and, oh, it's no big deal, it's no big deal, it's like. Yeah, it may be no big deal to you, but to the person that's about to buy this place, like they need to know that. The main place where waste comes out is leaking, right? And so uh, if nothing else, this was worth the nine hundred dollars that I made for this inspection today.
They might have had to replace that whole system, right?
Uh, they should, but they probably won't.
Of course.
They definitely should, but they probably won't, the problem, the problem, and this goes uh on a little bit on to the investment side of things. But the problem is, is uh, this this quad is on a hundred and forty, right? And so the property values over there don't always support replumbing, rewire. If we look at the electrical, it's the same thing, tons of defects, ton, the service needs to be thoroughly upgraded. But in order to do that, you have to go through each and every unit, tear out the walls, run the wires and all that kind of stuff. And so you can't always justify spending all that money when the property values don't sometimes support it. So that's the issue that we find in a lot of uh inner city and urban communities, you know, across the country. And a lot of times, people don't know, like as a landlord, they don't have no knowledge of this. Like, I think people be thinking landlords like way smarter, whatever, it's like, they don't know anything about this. All they know is what the contractor tell them, they don't know how plumbing work, then most of them, they don't know, you know? And then when they find out, their first thought is, is how can I fix this quickly? So that the tenants won't be on my behind or so that I can move some tenants in. When you don't, when you, it's it's hard to make great decisions when you don't have a lot of knowledge. You see, so this is again, why you guys are super, super valuable. You know what I mean? Because like I say, this is a catch, he's about to close on this house, and he was like, I sent him this video. And he sent me back the emojis that was like, you know, the, that emoji, that's what he said, that's what he sent me back. Cuz he didn't, I guess he didn't think to go in the basement and look at the main stack.
But yeah, still, they just about to patch it up real quick and keep removing.
Oh, of course, listen, if you can't beat them, join them, you better own you, you better go buy some shit. Do the same thing, like is this, is just, you know? That's why learning this is super, super, super beneficial, none of y'all should never be broke. Ever in life, you can go anywhere in the country, you can do this for section eight. You could do this for all these programs, you could do it for the government, for the uh local government, for the state government, government, for the federal government. Uh, you could do this privately just for, like I had, I got one investor. Uh, who is, he's planning on buying like three hundred properties over this summer in Cleveland. He wants me to be the one inspector that every time he buys, he wants me to go out and inspect that. I don't have, I don't need nobody, I don't need any business from anybody else at that point. All of these opportunity, like, I I mean, I am special, but like, they not just for me, these opportunities are available. For you as well, when you have, when you have something that's scarce, it's just like land, right? They not making.
Chase somebody, it's the money chasing you at this point.
This knowledge is invaluable, just, just this simple, you guys think you don't understand it, don't know, it's like. What you know and understand about a house, just at this point in the game, you could go out right now and make you some money. Cuz y'all, you could have, you could have, if you would have walked into this basement, e- even if you were like lost. As soon as you would have saw this pipe, you'd have been like, oh, that's the main stack. Right? And you'd have been like, oh, that's a clean out, and you'd be like, hold up, it's not supposed to be water leaking from there, boom. That's what, that's valuable, cuz they didn't catch it. I'm not gonna get on my soapbox talking that talk, but are there any questions uh as it relates to? The drain, waste and vent system. Uh, again, keep in mind, we, you, you'll be adding more knowledge to this. You'll be adding in, um, you know, the specifics about, the book goes into the different types. Uh, of drain pipes and things like that, the support, where they need to be supported, you'll be adding that. But I wanna make sure that the concepts are solid first, so that we have a solid foundation on which to add more information. Are we crystal clear?
I have a question. There's a picture I took, but I don't know what this is, but it's connected to like the. The drainage system, like by, if I send a picture in here, can you tell me what it is? I think it's a pump, but I don't know what it is.
Where are you gonna send it? Post it on Facebook?
In the chat, oh, on Facebook, yeah, I do that too.
Uh, if you, and if you have multiple, like with different angles and stuff like that, post those as well, so we can see them, but uh, yeah, go ahead and post it. This uh, this inspection today was a freaking doozy, man, I was in there for forever because again. This is an old building and this is the furnace. Furnace is older than I am, uh, this was an old building and again, there were four different units, so that's. Four sets of everything that uh need to be inspected, pictures taken, notated, and oh, oh, here they go, right here. All of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's bad.
And this is an easy fix too, like it wouldn't be, it's not hard to replace these, this is just like, I don't care, type of, type of stuff. Uh, there was some scorching, there was some signs of some scorching on on one of the water heaters. See here how you got your valve, see how in a, in a, just on the practical side of things? Nobody cares if this is a gate valve, a ball valve, a glove valve, this motherfucker leaking, like that's. That's all you need to know at that point, they're not, they're not gonna be asking you to, you know, differentiate between what type of valve it is. You just need to recognize that this is in fact a valve and be able to, you know.
They're not connecting, connected to nothing, it don't look like.
It is, on the, on the back end, see this, the chimney right here, so on it's, it's like literally right there. Uh, but there were holes in it, there were, there were holes in the vent pipe, so, yeah. They got problems, they got issues.
When you're doing your report, write it for these, mostly, you know, how you differentiate uh, what issue is coming from what unit?
How would you do it?
A, B, C? I guess, like, or you know.
I'll do basically the same, but I use the unit numbers. So uh, like on my water heater section, I'll have four water heaters, unit one, two, three and four. My furnace is one, two, three and four. In my defect comments, I will, when I, if I, if I say uh missing uh this or that. I will notate in my, remember that area where I was talking about the captions, adding the captions in your report? That's, that's typically where I will put it. So that they know. This is another reason why it's so important to do, to rough in that inspection while you were actually there, cuz could you imagine? Like, how do, I don't remember which unit this was, one, two, three or four. I have no, I do, I have no clue, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's eight o'clock, I did that inspection at twelve today. I don't remember, so if I hadn't have entered this or in uh to my report already. I would be SOL, cuz your guess would be good as mine at this point.
What do you mean by number? Like you're numbering?
Which unit? Cuz this was a quad, so it had four units.
Oh, okay.
So how you know, you know which one is which?
And also I have a question, cuz um, I was reading, rereading the end of the plumbing chapter. And I really, I'm trying to understand, cuz I really don't know what. Or how the furnace and like the oil tank and like all that, how did, how was that connected?
How is it connected to plumbing?
Yes.
Um, so how do we, how, how do we get hot water? From the what?
Um, from the hot water heater.
How is the, how is the hot water heater providing us any heat?
Um, it's either gas or electric.
Is, so if you have gas, then where is that gas coming from?
Okay, so, so the gas is in the tank.
So we don't have, so it, oil and gas are like the same thing, we don't, we don't, well, in Cleveland, we don't have a lot of. Oil tanks and gas is not held in oil, the gas comes from the meter. So a couple of pictures back, there are, there's a picture of the green gas meter. And that's what's actually bringing in the gas where we supply uh. The gas to the furnace, if it's a gas or stair furnace, as well as to a uh gas um. Uh, water heater, you could do the same, you could have the same thing with oil. And in that case, that's where you get into the oil tanks and different things like that, but that's basically like the fuel. Um, that's uh, providing us with the, the energy that we need to run the furnace. All of our, our, you know, uh, like gas appliances, that's where we're getting it from.
So the same way you have a water meter, you have a gas meter as well? So the same way you have a water meter, you have a gas meter as well? Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll talk about that in the, in the heating section. It'll probably make a little bit more sense in the heating section. But that's the reason why they included in plumbing is because those fuel, those different types of fuel is what is how we get our heat energy for our hot water. That's why they included it.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Anybody think they can do my report for me? To I use two hundred and fifty dollars if you can do the report.
I got you on plumbing, roof and exterior.
I'll do, I'll do a plumbing for sure.
I read, so with the furnace and a water heater, there's supposed to be, I believe, uh, if somebody can correct me, uh, at least an eighteen inch space, right, between uh both, like all sides as far as the spacing? Is that right?
For for what to?
Between uh the furnace and a water heater. So what I'm running with a couple houses I inspected so far, the furnace and a water heater is directly next to each other. And I felt like I read in the book that that's a defect. It should be at least eighteen inches between the two.
What is the eighteen inches? What does that speak to?
As far as like the uh venting goes. Or, I don't know, guess that's where I'm.
You're right about the, about the eighteen inches, but the eighteen inches refers to if uh it is in the garage. It needs to be at least eighteen inches off the ground.
Okay.
Uh, this black, like styrofoam looking stuff is insulation. So if you ever see that on your pipes, it's it's insulation. Technically, it's supposed to be there, but in a lot of cases.
Saw that today.
Yeah, in a lot of cases, it it won't be there, but if it is there, it needs to be installed properly. And if it is not, um, that's a reported would be fact. Do you see what I mean too about the perspective of these pictures? These are all the same water heater. But do you see how like, so when I'm going to do uh, when I'm going to write up my defect about the vent, like I have, like, look at this. Like the different perspectives, so that you can truly tell a story with your report. Do you understand what I mean by that? I wanted to show you guys the uh the roof. But I guess it's not gonna let me. Um, oh, well. Any other questions? Are all hearts and minds clear? The next time we talk about this, it it'll be on the test, so. Speak now, forever hold your peace. Look how, look, somebody was living in here. This is somebody's bathroom. Hold up, where is that? Okay, so this is somebody's bathroom, right? So you see how it is there? That's their bathroom floor. This is their bathroom ceiling. He had a wall of tennis shoes like from the floor all the way up to the ceiling, like just a wall of tennis shoes and it came out probably about three rows. But when I went in his bathroom, this is what it looked like. He had his daily bread there now. So the man, he getting his word in every day, but.
He could sell a couple of, he could sell a couple of pair of shoes.
I mean, this is not on him though. He just a tenant, but it's like, there's no way in hell I'd be living in no place like that. And again, things like this are clear indications, like they've had plumbing issues in this building before. And they've tried to adjust, you could tell on the joints. They've tried to address them. They've replaced some joints that were, you know, like, you can, you can. Know what?
No rodent issues or stuff. Yeah, I mean, I just see just holes everywhere. I would imagine like stuff.
No, no, no rodent issues that I saw, but I mean, I'm sure when you have open access for them, like, you know, it's it's not surprising that that they'll come in.
When the rent falls fifty, you can afford a whole bunch of pair of shoes.
I mean, that's fine, but I'm just not living like this, like. Just don't live like that, like that ain't, but you know, that's on the, that's on the.
What kind of like protective equipment do you wear? Because some of the stuff like some of the areas be looking a little rough. I don't know if I was, you know, go in there without.
Nine millimeter on my belly band. Is that what you meant? That's the toughest protected? Yeah, I do have my uh steel toe work boots. I got on uh like uh, they're like shop pants. I wear like a pair of khaki shop pants and I always layer up. So I I don't ever, I don't ever have like my skin exposed. Yeah, I always have layers. I don't care how hot it is. I will always have layers and I always have my hair uh wrapped up. I don't ever let my hair out either, because I walked out of that. Uh, and I, I had a bug on me, so like.
So do you wear like? In your belly band?
Yeah, in my belly band. I never leave home. And I got an ache on one too, so.
Oh, double strap.
It's very gross.
You got another question?
Yeah, I mean, more like a mask, like uh, so you can breathe, like you said, the cleaning, uh, the clean out was weak. So I imagine it smell like shit.
No, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't smell that bad. Uh, I do have a respirator. Uh, I do carry a respirer, like a half respirator. If I, if I needed that, um, but I'm used to that, because I don't like, you, uh, these how most all Cleveland basements look. Like this not, nothing that's uncommon for me. But yeah, if you, if you wanted to, like when the pandemic and all that was going on, I wore a gator. You know, so I had my mask on and stuff like that, but you can wear whatever it is that some people put on, the suits and all that kind of stuff. Um, you can, I typically, when I get down with an inspection, I typically stop like derub at the door and change my clothes and stuff like that, but I had a lot of stuff going on today, so. Wear whatever you feel like you need um to wear. A lot of, sometimes people ask me like, why you got your hair? I was like, I just, like, I don't like my hair to smell like, I told you, like, the only thing I want my hair smelling like is chicken and weed. Like, I don't want, you know, no smells from your house and what you got, like none of that, so, yeah.
Okay, now I have one more question. Um, you said after um, so the video of the clean out leaking, you said it would be a of an expensive replacement or repair. What is the cost like to repair? Like the whole stack then?
About three grand, minimum. Because you have, they have to drill up the floor to connect it. Depending, you know, depending like, so the stack is, you know, coming down and then there's the ground where it's connected. So depending upon where you have to address it at, you may have to, and I had that happen to me in a house before. We had to drill up the ground in the basement, connect it from there and then bring it up, you know, with the new pipe and all that kind of stuff, so. Minimum of the a three grand project. Um, beginning of my heart. Yeah, I got my uh tool bag and my cross body toolkit is car. Car gonna give me a deal one of these days, I'm telling you. Mark my words, I'm gonna get a deal with car. What'd you say?
I said, I'm trying to model for them.
Uh, any other questions? We good? Don't feel better? Don't matter. You'll figure it out in the buy and buy, what? Let's go. How you feel?
Hey, let me get it out. Need a size.
Uh, I heard it all up in you.
Yeah, I mean, I need, I need to brush up on some reading tonight, but I'm I'm gonna be there.
You might should just listen to it, go on and lay down, just listen to, put one air pod in and listen to it.
I can't, I can't afford no days off. I I've got that luxury.
I I feel it, I feel it. Okay, so if there's nothing else, I will let you guys go. Um, there is, there's a training on Wednesday. Uh, highly recommend, it's one of my coaches um that I'm bringing in to help you guys with some mindset stuff. So um, I'm gonna tell you guys, there are thirteen of you here right now. For I F three only, if you attend the training on Wednesday, I will give you until Thursday at noon to turn in your homework. Don't tell nobody. I'm telling it, oh, it was twelve, somebody dropped off, somebody heard that shit and left. You dirty mother. So the twelve of you here, you come to the training on Wednesday and your homework won't be due until Thursday, twelve noon, okay? Don't tell nobody, alright?
Business coaches.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we need to tell.
Yes, the training is gonna be a Zoom. You'll get the link.
Okay, cool.
On Wednesday, okay?
Be there.
Y'all be blessed. I catch you.